Okay, first of all, I want to apologize on behalf of the board for the lateness. We had a couple of very important issues that we had to complete before we could come out, so we apologize. So, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the July 20th, 2020 Lacey School Board Meeting. There are no student representative comments tonight, obviously it's summer, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Clark.
Thank you, President Downing, that was quick. Yeah, sorry. And I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. Downing just said, we apologize for being so late. So, welcome to the July Board Meeting. Glad to have everybody back in person. It's been a while, it seems like it's been longer than it actually has been, and albeit we're not in our usual location, but this is where we could make, ensure that we're socially distancing, so again, thank you for being here. I hope everybody's enjoying the summer. While I'm sure that vacations have been very sparse, the weather has been more than cooperative, so I hope that you have been enjoying the weather. And now that we've finally have had the Lacey Township High School graduation and the Lacey Township Middle School Promotion, I once again wanted to congratulate our class of 2020 seniors and our eighth graders who are the future class of 2024. It was very hot out there that day, so I give everybody a lot of credit for enduring the heat, but it was a beautiful ceremony, and I know that the students and the parents are very appreciative of the fact that we were able to have not only a virtual graduation, but an in-person one as well. Okay, I'm going to shift gears and talk about a topic that I know is on everyone's mind, and that is school reopening, and what that's going to look like in September. So, as you know, several weeks ago Governor Murphy provided school districts guidance, or guidelines, I should say, for the reopening of schools. Those guidelines are titled "The Road Back: Restart and Recovery Plan for Education." We also call it RRP, because in education, we're good with acronyms. So, that, those guidelines provide districts with the information necessary to ensure that schools open safely, and that we are prepared to accommodate students' unique needs, and everything in between. Since the release of the information, we have formed five subcommittees of the larger reopening committee. Those subcommittees are comprised of board members, school nurses, administrators, teachers, guidance counselors, and child study team members, and they met to explore a variety of reentry options that I'm sure everybody has heard a lot about. And we looked at those reentry options as trying to find one that would best serve our district. So, like I said, these subcommittees met, discussed the reentry models that were recommended not only by the guidelines that Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Department of Education released, but along with other models that have been recommended by other sources, reliable sources, and looking at, you know, what other school districts are doing. We took a look at a lot of reentry models that other states are doing, and so the process was informed by a lot of information. So, after taking all of those factors into consideration, including taking a look at our facilities, transportation, and our overall enrollment, we concluded that the best reentry model for all six schools would be what's called a hybrid A/B cohort model. I'm going to explain that, so, and, well, let me explain it first, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about how we're going to re-explain it. So, the hybrid A/B cohort model is definitely going to utilize a mix of in-person and remote learning. The model will provide students with face-to-face instruction on alternating days, and that's what the A/B represents. Cohorts are going to be created based on student last names. So, in essence, what we're doing is we're taking the district and dividing the population in half by last names. Now, we're still working on where the alphabet split will be, but right now, we're looking at A through L and M through Z. And again, we're still working on that, because we have to look at how this is going to affect transportation. So, once we've established those cohorts, Cohort A will attend school in-person on Monday, Wednesday, and alternating Fridays, so Monday, Wednesday, every other Friday. Cohort B will attend school on Tuesday, Thursday, every other Friday. On the day that students are not scheduled to be physically present in class, they are going to work on assignments that are created by our teachers that support and correlate the instruction that was received the day before. And finally, if the hybrid is in place for the entire 2020-2021 school year, we calculated that Cohort A and Cohort B will each have 90 days in-person, and that is inclusive of any Mondays that we have off, or any days off in between, or any Fridays that the district is closed, and it just worked out that way. So, I know I've just shared a lot of information, and I alluded early, earlier, I alluded to the fact that, you know, it's not our intention to just inform our parents this way. We are going to be having several virtual parent and staff forums. And in, while we have those forums, we'll be able to explain the model, but we'll also be able to accept questions, because there are going to be many, and I realize that. Our original plan was to schedule the forums for the end of this week, perhaps early next week, but I'm not sure if, if it's been made public yet, I know it's been released in the news, but Governor Murphy made a new announcement just today stating that New Jersey will allow an all-remote learning option for parents who are concerned about sending their children to school for in-person instruction. Further, he said that the New Jersey Department of Education will release guidance about this new information by the end of the week. So, obviously, we need a little bit more time to plan for this new option, and how it impacts the plan that we've already come up with. So, I'm going to shift gears for a moment to talk a little bit about our school reopening family survey. I want to thank all of our families that participated. We received nearly 2,400 responses, which is impressive, and we're in the process of putting that data together so that we can present and share the results with the public. So, that is going to be shared, and it's also going to be posted on our website. I also want to thank our staff, who are also in the process of submitting their responses to the school reopening staff survey. That survey closes today, so we're going to be using all of that data, the original family survey, the staff survey, to inform, or continue to inform, our reopening plan. And the last thing I want to say about this, and there's a lot to be said about it when we have our forums, but the last thing I want to say tonight is that another family survey is going to go out tomorrow, and that family survey is going to be much shorter and simpler in the terms, it's going to be less questions, because it's going to be really important for us to know how many families are going to choose remote instruction, and how many families are going to choose the hybrid. So, I ask our families to be on the lookout for that email, and just like the original one was sent out, it will be sent out via email, will also be posted on our website. I was going to say one more thing, and I lost my train of thought. I guess that's all I wanted to say about the survey. So, more information is going to be going out, and again, I can't thank our staff and our families enough, because the information that you provide to us is very important. I just remembered what I wanted to say. So, our subcommittees are going to continue to meet, we're meeting this week, but part of the guidance is very explicit in that it says that we need to involve our parents and our students in the planning process. So, that is also going to be happening. We are going to be inviting our parents and our students, obviously our older students, to participate in our subcommittees. Again, those five subcommittees are made up of five focus areas, so we will be inviting our parents to participate in that as well, so that's the one thing I wanted to add. So, again, I know I provided a lot of information, we have been working very hard on this, I can't stress enough how challenging it has been, because the information seems to change on a daily basis, while I'm, well, I'm going to reserve my opinion, but, and that just is indicative of the information that came out just today. I will say it is a little frustrating to hear that we're not going to receive the guidance until the end of the week, because September 1st is around the corner, and that's going to come up quickly, and there are so many other things that we need to talk about with regard to the safety of not only our students, but our staff as well. And that includes how we're going to serve meals, how students are going to ride on buses, what personal protective equipment we're going to be providing for both our students and staff, contact tracing, answering questions like what happens when a student is tested, or when a student tests positive, or what happens when a staff member tests positive, and those are all things that are included in our reopening plan, and things that we're going to be talking about in our subcommittee meetings, and things that we're going to be talking about at both our staff forum and our family forum. So, I wanted to provide an overview tonight with much more information to come. And with that, that concludes my comments. President Downing, just continue, enjoy the nice weather, and enjoy the summer, because it is going to come to an end very, very soon.
Okay, thank you very much. And it was a little frustrating, sitting in your office, getting, hearing about Governor Murphy.
Yes.
Not that that's a bad thing, but at the last minute, and then holding off till the end of the week to give you information. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comments. Give me a moment to read this. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand, and when called upon, state your name, address, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the Board President. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice unless, until all who wish to comment have been recognized. Please use the microphone, which is right up here. Is there anyone that would like to come up and address the board? Please raise high, because it's hard to see you guys. Over there? And when you speak in the microphone, if you could speak slowly, because it's hard to hear up here, at least, I think so.
Good evening, Tonya Rosoli, Sunrise Beach. Your subcommittees that you mentioned, you did not mention any public input other than parents. So, if you're not a parent, are you going to be able to give input from the public on any of the subcommittees? I did not hear you mention that.
It's not going to be a private meeting, Mr. Rosoli, so the public can attend.
Okay. The public will be notified then, the same as the parents will?
It'll be posted on our website.
Okay. I have some questions about the agenda tonight. Page 11. On page 11, under summer athletic programs?
Yes.
Did we hold any of those?
Are we what? I'm sorry.
Did we hold any summer athletic programs at all, based on this? It says it started July 13th for football?
It didn't.
It did. Didn't the governor just approve that today, practices? So, were we in violation of the order?
No, we are not in violation. We received very clear guidelines from the NJSI, NJS, NJFIAA, with, which was very much in line with the executive order and the restrictions that were lifted. In addition to that, we're following some very strict protocols with health forms and temperature checking, and a variety of other measures to keep both the coaches and the students safe. So, we are not in violation, though.
Okay, and one of those things you're following naturally for all athletics, and any extra curriculars is random drug testing, correct?
What was your question?
Random drug testing is naturally included? It's part of your program, it's part of your policies?
Are you asking, did we approve random drug testing?
Are you, still, are you testing?
Yes, we are.
Prior to the seasons?
But, wait, no, let me clarify. Random drug testing starts when school starts.
Okay, so you're not doing random drug testing on any of the summer athletic programs? So, if a person is in fact in violation of your policies, we're still letting them practice?
We are.
And being part of the extra curriculum, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Page 15. I'd like to know why, under number nine, Summer Online Learning Academy, everybody gets $1,300 and one person gets $6,500. Why?
Because that person taught multiple hours.
So, they do more hours than anybody else, that one person?
That's correct.
Page 16, E11. I guess I'm old-fashioned. I would like to know why the man who was the women's cross-country high school coach received $7,900, and the woman that replaced him is only making $6,800. Why did the man make more money than the woman?
Has nothing, nothing to do with gender, it's the way the contract reads, there are levels.
Okay. And that goes the same for the assistant volleyball coach?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I noticed the disparity in pay.
The longer you coach, the more money you make. The more experience you have, the more money you make.
Summer weight room, page 17. That was open? People were in the building lifting weights?
Social distancing.
Summer weight room, page 16. Seventeen. Okay. Are they doing that?
Yes.
They were allowed in the building, and they were lifting weights. Were they tested coming in?
There were protocols in place where all of the students filled out health forms, and their temperatures being taken.
Okay, on entry, like we were tonight, I mean, which is good. Okay? And if there was a problem, they were contact traced, correct?
Correct.
There was a donation for $2,000 by a Board of Education member. Did that money go to a specific account? And what was the reason for the donation?
The donation, I believe, is from Mrs. Senza, she's returning, right?
It is, yes, it is.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, yeah. Hi, Mr. Rosoli. Yes, sure. Mrs. Senza made it clear that she was quote-unquote reimbursing the board for some recent legal expenditures, so the money was credited against, by law, against those legal expenditure accounts.
All right, so it did go to a specific account?
Yes.
To cover legal fees and Oprah request form that she?
Yes.
Submitted, and things like that?
Yes.
So, she reimbursed the school district?
Yes.
Isn't that nice? Okay?
I'm sorry, just say five minutes is, is off service.
Okay, I'll come back when everybody else is done.
You might want to just stay there, I'm not sure if there, is there anyone else that wants to, oh, there is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like a foggy version.
I know. It's hard to see.
Boy, that's a long walk. Hi, my name is Heather Scanlon. I live in Barnegat Pine section of Forkett River, but I am here this evening on behalf of the Municipal Alliance, and if I may, I'd like to read a letter from our committee, followed by some of my comments. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the group tonight. Our letter says, "Dear Dr. Clark and members of the school board, the Lacey Municipal Alliance is urging you to consider our plea for funding of the Student Assistance Coordinator, known as a SAC position, in the high school to be reinstated. This issue has been discussed at our meeting, and we represent a very strong voice in many community, of many community and alliance members. Research indicates that one in four children are affected by someone else's substance abuse. Addressing problems in the home, such as substance abuse and domestic abuse through intervention, at an early age, has been shown to prevent substance abuse and academic failure in the middle school and high school grades. A SAC is trained and educated to address these issues properly, where other role models, teachers, and counselors may fall short. The SAC teaches the students about the disease of addiction, how to communicate their feelings, and how to cope with this family illness. As a result, students are able to overcome the impact of substance abuse on their lives, and be more able to succeed academically and socially. Due to COVID-19, the role of SACs in school will be more important now than ever. SACs are equipped to access and refer at-risk students out for whatever treatment they may require. SACs are in place to offer prevention education, to make both staff, parents, and also students aware of the dangers of substance abuse and other destructive behaviors. Since its inception, the Alliance has always worked closely with the school district and the police department in an effort to prevent substance abuse in our community, and we feel it is imperative that we do not lose those support services that are invaluable to those students already at risk to continue the cycle of substance abuse, and we respectfully submit our request that you restore the position of Student Assistant Counselor in the high school without sacrificing those needed services at the elementary levels. So, let me just add that the circumstances of the last four-plus months have been stressful for everyone. There isn't anyone who hasn't felt the impact of the pandemic. You don't have to be professional to understand the impact that it has had on parents, students, and our staff. Many families have been able to work and still get paid, yet they've had challenges coming up with alternatives for their childcare needs, and certainly, many families have had their income greatly reduced, and have been trying to figure out just how to pay for their bills and put food on the table. I was shocked when I heard last week that there was a family in the parking lot of Shop Right with a sign that said, "My children are hungry, we need help, please help." I'm talking about right here in Lacey Township. Or how about the families who are now working from home, juggling their job responsibilities, and helping their kids with schoolwork? Even our own staff members have had the challenges of learning a whole new way of teaching virtually through a computer. And certainly, all of our families have experienced the stress of worrying about a family member contracting the virus. We know that not all parents have the coping skills under normal circumstances to deal with problems, and the increase in abuse, whether it be domestic or with substances, when families are faced with difficulties, it is well-documented. The Alliance is concerned about the effect this will have on our students. Now, the municipal alliance programs were formed to be an arm of prevention, if you will. When the alliances throughout the state undergo the process of a needs assessment to determine what our needs are in our individual communities, we examine what's called risk factors. And I'm sure it wouldn't be a surprise to most of you that the pandemic has set the stage for the highest level of risk category for substances abuse, as well as other problems created by stressful situations. You can call it a code RED, a Level 10, or an imminent threat, they all apply. Not only are we looking at the highest risk category for our students, we are losing many of the very resources necessary to help them cope. Many other school districts in our area throughout the state, throughout the years, have had DARE programs or something similar. We do not. Other school districts utilize SROs, and Lacey will no longer have one, at least not on a full-time basis. The Alliance also has had a strong record of collaboration with the school district to provide prevention, and we will continue to strive to do so. However, I must tell you that our funding for this coming year has been drastically reduced, and even our prevention efforts will be curtailed. So, now, just when it is needed most, the school district has taken away one of the few safety nets available to our students, and at a time when they themselves are most at risk for abusing alcohol and drugs and other destructive behaviors. Now, we know that the school district has had to deal with some unprecedented challenges. Just trying to figure out how to have a graduation, and how the schools can open safely in September has preoccupied an enormous amount of time and energy, and we certainly appreciate that. Our concern, however, is whether or not all of our students will be able to come to school prepared in mind and body, and able to participate, so hopefully, they will become high school graduates. So, I just repeat what we said in the letter, we respectfully request that you restore the position of Student Assistant Counselor in the high school without sacrificing those services at the elementary level, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. You gave us a lot to think about. Are there, in the back, I see you waving?
Hi, everybody, Amory Lighter from the woods. Two things I want to talk to you guys about, or at least ask. One, I brought up one time of the virtual meetings, my concern about the bathrooms. I believe the high school during, when school was open, only had one bathroom open. I was wondering if there was going to be more bathrooms open while school was in session, and also the removal of the air dryers per CDC recommendation. You know, if you go to a salon, you can't even have your hair blown, well, you don't know, but you can't have your hair blown out, sorry. You know, you can't have air dryers. So, I know that the paper towel thing is an issue, but whatever, like, I just went in the bathroom, so here I am, talking about it again. My other concern is I can't imagine what you guys are going through, trying to figure out what the heck is going to happen when it keeps changing, it's tumultuous times, I get it. My concern, not so much for my high school daughter, but for my daughter that's in Mill Pond, the virtual learning was not good for her, and thankfully, Ms. Schaefer, one of her teachers, rose way high, and really went out of her way with phone calls and FaceTiming just to kind of help her. So, I get the eight, the different cohorts, and Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fri, I understand all that, but what, my concern, just hearing this tonight, is going to be like, what if she needs extra help? And the teacher is going to be busy on those days, and not on her off days, so to speak, when she should be doing her homework or whatever, so that's my concern. So, I know that you guys really don't know what the hell's going to happen, and I get that, so, you know, I am standing by. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Lighter, thank you for your comments. I don't know if you were expecting an answer, but I'm going to respond to a couple, and I can't do it like this right now for a moment, but what I wanted to say about the first thing you said is there are no bathrooms at the high school that are locked, so I wanted to clarify that. To your second point, I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to use the bathrooms down the hall here, but you're going to see that they were upgraded, there is a paper towel dispenser, and that's something that we're slowly working on, because that is part of our plan. We recognize that, you know, we need to have more soap dispensers, and we need to have more paper towel dispensers, so that is, that is part of the plan, and we're working on that.
And the third thing, special help, she said.
Oh, so you talked about remote learning. Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Yes, so, you're not the first parent to tell us about the challenges of remote instruction. We are very much well aware, and I will be the first to say that there are some students that are going to excel tremendously in an online environment, in a remote environment, in a virtual environment, whatever we're going to call it, but I suspect that those students would succeed anyway, because we all know that not all students learn alike. With that said, when, you know, this all happened back in March, and we were informed that we were going to close down our doors, I'm also going to be the first to tell you that I never believed it was ever going to happen, and yet, here we are. But, I will say this, we did in two days what should have taken two years to plan and implement, and kudos to our teachers. And kudos to our teachers for getting it done. Kudos to our parents for getting it done because we know that our students were home and we know what a challenge it was. Well, now we have a little bit more time. And in addition to the plan that I just explained to you, a contingency is a reality that at any given moment, the governor is going to announce that he's once again closing down public school, and we will be learning remotely. Do we have to do better? You bet we do. But we have a little bit more time. Is it going to be perfect? No, because we still haven't had two years to plan and implement a hybrid or a remote or a full remote program for that matter. But that is the planning that we've been doing every single day, literally around the clock and on the weekends. Our administrative team is working around the clock. Our teachers are working around the clock, and that is the crux of our subcommittees so that we are ready for whatever decision is rendered. And the decision right now as it stands is that school is going to open in September, albeit the option was just added today, forcing us to pivot yet once again. Pivot has become one of our favorite words, and we've been pivoting a lot. So we are doing the very best we can with the circumstances that we've been given to work with, and you have our commitment because every single board member up here is on a subcommittee along with the other people that I mentioned to you. So thank you for saying what you said. Please know that you're not the only one. If I counted how many emails I've received and how many phone calls I've received, the sentiment is right along there with you.
Thank you for answering that. And these subcommittees are like Mr. Decker is working on. What's the title of his subcommittee? What's your?
Personalized learning.
What?
Personalized learning.
Personalized learning. Donna McAvoy is on that committee because she's a teacher or was a teacher. She's retired. Always a teacher, doesn't matter if you're retired or not. So there are some of the issues that they will be addressing in that committee as well. So thank you for bringing that up, and yeah, we're always thinking about stuff like that. Every time we think we have one answer or two answers answered, then three more pop up. It's, so we're getting there. Just be patient with us. Okay, is there anyone else before Mr. Rizzoli comes back up?
Dee Behujin, Fork and River. I understand that this is a very stressful time for everybody, especially when the rules keep changing. I'm wondering why there was no effort to do any in-person ESY or in-person services, but you managed to have wait room?
That's a great question, Mrs. Behujin. If we could have had in-person ESY, we would have. The reason we didn't is because we received absolutely zero guidance and direction on whether or not we could. And we had advertised, we had hired, we had developed all of our plans for a remote ESY because that was all the information we had until the governor announced that it was permissible for us to have in-person ESY, but we were to follow the rules of summer camp. And ESY, I'm sorry, is not a summer camp. And we simply did not have the time to turn that around into an in-person program. We simply did not.
And no effort was made for in-person services either, but you still had wait room. It's still, this is why the special ed community gets very disgusted because athletics is always up here and we're down here.
Noted.
My other question is, will there be a deadline to decide if you're on the fence of whether you're going to do the hybrid or the remote learning? Is there going to be a deadline?
The decision's been made. We are doing a hybrid.
As a parent?
I'm sorry.
As a parent, will there be a deadline?
For whether or not, oh, so, okay, that's a great question. So the survey that I mentioned is going out tomorrow, and that is one of the questions. Do you want to come back in the hybrid? Or as a parent, do you choose remote instruction?
Right. Well, what if some people are waiting on the numbers? Some kids have, you know, medical issues, so they're waiting to find out. So is there going to be like August 15th? You have to decide whether you want your child to go?
We haven't decided that yet. So again, remember, we just got that information today. So in the next few days, we're going to send out the survey because we need preliminary data. You know, we need to know, you know, what are we talking about? Are we talking about 50% of our school community choosing to keep kids home? Are we talking about 20%? Are we talking about 80%? So those percentages are really going to drive our plan because, and I'm just going to make this up, if the data comes back that 50% of our population is choosing to keep their kids at home, well, then logically, that would say that the remaining 50% that want to send their kids to school, perhaps we don't have to do an A-B. Perhaps it can be every day because now we have the space. So there are a lot of moving parts here. But that survey tomorrow is going to be preliminary data, and we're not saying that we're going to hold parents to it. We just want to know from a preliminary standpoint, you know, what are we talking about? But there's going to be other opportunities and, you know, especially with our special needs students and families, those are going to be one-on-one conversations with case managers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Clark, I have a question, just to follow up on that. Have you been? This hybrid and young lady here, that question about the deadline, is it an all or nothing for the whole year? So let's say a parent, their parents decide that they don't want their child to do, come in for the cohort they want to do the remote learning, and then the third way through the year, they said, you know what? This is not good for us. We want to come back and send our children. Is it going to be an all or none? Or are we going to allow them to come back? I don't know if you guys have given thought to that. Because that's going to play with our numbers. Because if we open up our classroom and say, okay, well, we're good with, you know, 15 in the class, and then all of a sudden, we get an influx of students who were doing remote learning solely, and then they come back in, how's that going to affect? Have we given any thought to that in our committees?
Yeah, we have, and that's a great question. And that is going to be part of the decision-making process because, and I'm, again, I'm going to speculate, again, we just got the information today, but it is going to be very difficult for us to, you know, say to parents, well, if this week you want to be in person, but this week you want to take advantage of the hybrid, that's going to be challenging for us because we can't staff that. So that is going to be a consideration. Is it going to be a time period? You know, is it going to be a semester? Is it going to be, you know, weeks? You know, we don't know. So that's going to be part of the planning process and something that we're going to be talking about in our subcommittees, which you're going to be part of.
Right. So, you know, just to stop the flip-flopping back and forth, are we going to set a deadline, a guideline for parents saying, okay, well, you've already flipped back, coming back to class, now you want to go back to remote? You know, we can't have this constant flip-flopping because of numbers.
Right, there can't be.
So there'll be some type of guideline set.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
In the back on the corner there.
Hi, my name is Ellen Vidal. I'm from Lynnoka Harbor, and I just want to say thank you to everybody on the board for all the hard work you're doing. And I just, before I start, want to say my daughter's in the high school, how awesome all the teachers and support staff were for her finishing up on the remote, and she did great, and it's because of the teacher dedication. So I want to be positive before I get into 100 questions. It's really based on what the governor did say today and what, Dr. Clark, you said now about doing another survey. We are on the fence, like most parents, about sending our daughter back for medical issues. She is able to be around kids. She sails. She does activities that are outside distancing. Coming to school is a much different situation. The confines of a classroom, whether lunch is in the lunchroom or in the classroom, just passing in the hallway, how they're going to exchange classes, that kind of closeness has health concerns because of her health status to begin with, never mind the COVID. So that just complicates it. But I don't want her to miss out on her high school experience either. So are there still, like, you're doing sports now, are there going to be activities? Is she able, going to be able to do maybe AIDA or digital communications online? Are they going to have club meetings so the kids that are home can still participate fully in school, like the kids that are doing sports in school are? So these are questions we have. And now, another survey tomorrow, I want to be able to give you my answer and say, well, I think I'm going to keep her home depending on the numbers because we don't know the numbers. So I would say I want to keep her home, but I'm not sure. And without having answers to my questions, I can't answer your survey effectively.
Well, there is an open-ended question, and by the way, we're still looking at the survey before we send it out, obviously, but there is an open-ended question where we ask parents to tell us about any other concerns that they have. And so what I'm going to, you know, ask you to do is participate in the parent forum. So we'll be announcing that very soon.
Okay.
And by the way, any questions that we can't answer during that parent forum, we will take down and create an FAQ document, and we will get the answers. And the last thing I want to say is just know this, we're not going to have all of the answers. Right now, it is our intention to hopefully have after-school clubs and activities because we realize how important it is to round out the school day. In fact, on tonight's agenda, we are approving all of our club advisors along with our coaches. But, you know, we have to truly, to your point, ensure that we're keeping staff and students safe.
Right.
And that's the part that's going to be tricky.
Okay. I was just concerned because another survey, I can, parents will answer.
But please feel free to, you know, be very candid in the open-ended question. That's going to be the last question. And, you know, again, I encourage all parents to come to the forum. What I'm asking is to just realize we're not going to have all the answers.
Understood. Thank you.
Mrs. Vidal?
Yeah.
So what I just brought up before is something to think about. So if you're really concerned about Lil and her ailments, so you may be one of those parents saying, no, we're going to start the remote learning, and then once you see what we have in effect here for the safety reasons, then you can say, you know what? I like what they're doing. Maybe I can bring my daughter back into classroom. So that's something you might want to just sit and consider.
Right.
You know, once you see what we have in place. And like Dr. Clark said, I know they're feverishly working on a lot of safety things, and I think it's some good stuff that they're working on, so.
I just wanted to make sure it's not like when you're homeschooled or something. If you're too ill to be home, then you're not well enough to participate in school activities. I don't want her to be excluded if I don't send her back to school.
Absolutely not. I understand your concerns.
I'd like to add to Mr. Pleno's comment there, if I could. This is turning to a science that we don't know yet what's going to happen. We have to satisfy the DOE, the state of New Jersey, the parents, students are number one, obviously, the NGA, the union, we have to satisfy. There are so many different aspects of this, and this is turning out to be a science. And, you know, with the state, we bring back students back in, and all of a sudden, the numbers goes up, and Murphy says, you know what? Remote learning. You know? And myself being a teacher, in two days' time, went from teaching a shop to doing remote learning. So it's all, it's not an exploratory science, I'd say, but it's a science that we're trying to master and figure out. And today is a perfect example where I've watched Dr. Clark, Mr. Zalinski, and everybody work endless hours trying to work on this schedule. And transportation, we are to the point now where we are trying to schedule transportation if there is a family that's not married or possibly divorced with a different last name, but we're trying to make sure that that family comes to school the same day on the same bus to try and save on babysitting fees or care fees, whatever. We're looking at every possible aspect as a board and the administrators are doing the best they possibly can to try to satisfy. But people aren't going to be happy, no matter what we come out with, they're not going to be happy, but the biggest concern is going to be safety. Safety, safety, safety. What's the best for your son? What's the best for your daughter? Or whatever it is. And for them to go through that and see every address to make sure that A-day that Johnny Smith lives with Mrs. Jones, that that last name is still going to be in that A through L, and they have to look at, hey, do we have way too many Ls than Ms.? Are way too many Ls and Rs? Are we over that 50% capacity? So the amount of work that, hours that's going into this right now, and then this morning, our governor comes in and says, whoop, we're changing it again. So, you know, come September, you know, August 29th, we might have everything set. And then on September 1st, he says, you know what? We're doing this now. So trust me, I've seen the amount of work with the board members going through. I mean, I am not complaining by any means. I ran my platform here for the kids. I'm probably at 30 hours the last week between four graduations and the amount of meetings that we've had trying to get this right. So just bear with us, and we might have to readjust.
Nobody ever said that, but to be honest, I was just asking my questions because I don't know how to answer your questions unless I ask mine.
Right.
So that's all it is. Everybody's got them until the day school starts. So thank you.
And that's why that open-ended question is really important, to put your concerns in that box, your questions, because then we can feed off of that. So thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Diane Laird, and I live in the Barnicot Pine section. First, I have a question. Are the kids going to be mandated to wear masks? And I'm talking about like elementary.
That's a great question.
I mean, we're talking about first graders and second graders and going in the bathroom and dropping them on the floor and then putting them back on their faces. And I mean, that's a concern.
So the answer to your question is getting to and from school, yes. All students will be required to wear a mask, as will all staff members. And we are taking steps to ensure that we are helping our teachers provide instruction on how to properly wear that mask, but more importantly, how to keep that mask on. And listen, I get it. We all understand that asking a preschooler and a kindergarten, kindergartner to wear a mask is probably going to be the most challenging thing our teachers are going to have to do. Teaching them how to tie their shoes is going to be 10 times easier. We understand that. But just remember this, and I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Peters said, it is all about safety because at the end of the day, that's what we're talking about.
Okay. And I understand how everything we're doing is safety of the children and the teachers and the staff and everybody. But with your split days, your A-B theory, parents have to work five days a week. So now your kid who's in school with, let's say, 20 kids in the same class every day, or let's say Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, and Thursday is now going to daycare and going to be exposed to a whole different barrage of things and then come back to school. So I think you're actually doing more harm because I think if the kids were with their same 20 kids five days a week, they'd be safer than now having to go to daycare two, three days a week and being exposed to all that. And not only just kids that are their age, you're talking daycare kids that are tiny and all the germs that they have. So now they're exposed to so much more, and they're bringing it to the teachers and the staff and everybody else.
We have to stand by the state guidelines at 50%, 50% capacity, whether it be the buses, whether it be for lunch, which I believe, Dr. Clark, don't quote, I mean, I'm, if I'm wrong, we're talking about possibly handing the students lunch as they leave, to take it with them, a bagged lunch, to cut down the exposure time. They have looked at that aspect. But we have to be at 50% capacity. We can't go over state guidelines, and that's what the state's telling us.
And the second thing is with the buses, I mean, like between all the shifts, are they going to be all wiped down, I guess, between different pickups and stuff like that? Will the buses be sanitized daily between pickups?
Right. And but, you know, keep in mind that the amount of students that are going to be on the bus are going to be less. But yeah, absolutely. Sanitation protocols are a huge part of the plan.
Okay.
We have electric ionized sprayers that actually has a film that attaches to things and dries and cures and disinfects the buses and the schools.
Fantastic. All right, well, thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Right here in the gray shirt.
Debbie Guvernaugh Smith, Carr Street, Fork and River. The, is it set for the older kids to do all of their subjects throughout the entire year? Or are they going to have four subjects for the beginning part of the year and four subjects for the second half?
So I'm thinking you're talking about middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school, yes.
So just for the sake of everybody, I'm just going to explain the schedule that the high school students are in right now. So the high school students are in what's called an A-B block, meaning that they-- So the high school students are in what's called an A-B block, meaning that they are taking courses on A-Day and courses on B-Day, but that's alternating. So if we were to do a, this A-B hybrid, what we would essentially be doing to high school students is a block within a block, which is insanity. So instead, we have to double shift for middle school and high school and do what's called a four-by-four, which means that, yes, they are going to take four classes for the first semester in an A-B, right, every other day? And then four different classes for the second semester, which actually mimics college. It's what happens when we go to college. We take courses, the semester ends, we get our grades, and then we begin a new semester with a new set of courses. So yes, we are going to shift to this, what's called a four-by-four, and then implement the A-B hybrid on top of that.
Okay. How will that work with AP classes? Because I have, between my, next year I'll have three high schoolers, they will be taking seven AP courses between the three of them. So my concern is if they're taking, obviously, they have to take all of their AP classes in the first half of the year because in the second half of the year, there's not enough time. The AP exams are given in the beginning of May. So there's not enough instructional time to actually teach that subject in the second half of the year. So if they're forced to take them in the beginning half of the year, how will that play out? And now they're done learning those subjects, you know, the end of January, beginning of February, they actually can't be tested now until May.
Right. So that's a very specific question. And that's probably something that we're, the high school administration and along with Mr. Decker and Mr. Zalinski and the high school team is working on. It's a great question. I can't tell you, I'll have the answer for that right at this moment.
Okay. My second question is, being that the academies, especially as they go later in the high school, you know, junior and senior year specifically, they seem to drop off in numbers, are they still, are those academies still going to run alphabetically because they are so small? Or is there going to be some type of consideration taken for the academies and the smaller AP classes to keep those kids together more?
So the first part of your question, yes, the academies are going to run. And I think the second half of your question is, are they going to run alphabetically?
Yes.
So the alphabet can't dictate the program, nor can the program dictate the alphabet. We just have to simply split the district in half alphabetically. So it's going to work how it's going to work.
Okay. Because they're very small, so I mean, some of the classes essentially could have...
Actually, that's not necessarily true. Our cohorts were our, two, three of our college academies are very large.
Well, the STEM academy is very small in junior and senior year.
Well, right, that's a different academy. I didn't say all of them. I said some of them.
And leadership in humanities tends to drop off after sophomore year as well.
So, you know, once we decide where that alphabet split's going to be, that's when the principals are going to have to take a look at their master schedules and see what it is that we end up with. Again, we're still in planning phases. We had a first land on that model, and we just did that literally last week. And perhaps the week before. And now we have to take into consideration this new element. So there's still a lot of planning and a very small window to do it.
I do just want to make that note that to, you know, for my children that are in the STEM academy, those are the ones that are taking the bulk of the AP courses. So if that's dictating their entire first half of the year, I just want to make that point that...
And the last thing we want to do is overload a student.
Okay. That's a grueling course load.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to do that.
Okay.
Because that's just setting them up for failure.
No, it's setting the mom up for...
For that.
For a long, long semester. With sports, with full of sports, is it slated to start right after school? Or will there be a gap? So if high school sports, if high school gets out at 12:05, are they going to start right after school like they have in the past? Or will there be a gap where they're going to start a little bit later in the day?
Yeah, so that still depends as well because we have to also keep an eye on what districts around us are doing, right, are doing. So think about competition. So if we're ending at a certain time, but another district is not, we have to take that into consideration. We also have to take into consideration that our buses are in the process of transporting kids. So we have to, we're working out the schedules to see how that's going to work.
Okay.
And that will, you know, the answer to that will become more readily available once we've made that split and decide who's doing what. But now we also have to figure out what parents are sending their kids to school and what parents are not, because that, again, adds an entire new element.
But regardless of whether somebody chooses virtual learning or in-school instruction with the cohorts, they are still eligible to play sports?
What was it about, are they what?
If they choose virtual learning, strictly virtual learning, can the kids...
Oh, yeah, they're still our students, absolutely.
Okay, okay. So they can still participate in all after-school activities?
Right, but I guess what a parent has to ask him or herself is if they are nervous about sending their kids to school because there's no medically document, let's assume that there's no medical documentation, but the parent is just nervous, then the parent has to ask themselves, well, if they're too nervous to send their child to school for academics, why would they send their child for sports? But that's not for us to decide.
Okay.
That's an individual decision, and we recognize that.
Okay. I do know that there are some parents, especially younger kids, if there's so many restrictions, which I understand is dictated by the state, you have to follow guidelines. But if there's so many restrictions and the kids are not getting the social aspect, I know there are some parents that are opting to do virtual learning because, you know, just as much academics, it's social interaction. And if they're not getting that aspect of it, it's kind of counterproductive. If it starts off with the A-B schedule in the beginning of the year, say things start to look up, is there any chance that they will go back to any sense of normalcy throughout, during the course of the year?
I think if we all have say something to say about it, yes.
Okay. Just want to check.
Yep. And remember, on the flip side, that can be the complete opposite, and we all go back to remote learning, which we're hoping. And, you know, let me say this, and I'm going to use the graphic. In one of the gazillion webinars that we've watched, one of them put out this excellent graphic, and if you can picture the infinity loop on a horizontal, on the left side of that infinity loop is, we're open. We're open as if COVID never happened. In the center of that infinity loop is a hybrid. And on the right side of that infinity loop is remote instruction. And the point being is that we have to be able to pivot at any given point of that infinity loop. So we could be, you know, all of September in that A-B hybrid, and all of a sudden, the cases spike, and the governor says, we're closing again. We have to be able to pivot to that. On the flip side of all of that, we might get to January, and we're all doing the right thing, and we're taking all the precautions that we have been taking up until this point, and school goes back to normal. So, and right there, those are our three options. We're either open, we're in a hybrid, or we're closed, and that's it.
Okay. Last question. If the weight room is in fact open, I know that cross-country in the past, once the season had started, they usually used half of their one day of practicing. Is it open only for football? Or is it open to other sports as well, as long as they meet the restrictions?
I don't know that. I can find out for you, but I don't know that right now.
If you could, that would be great.
Right. And keep in mind that, you know, the amount of students that are going to be allowed in the weight room is going to be far less than it ever was.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for your questions and comments. I'm sorry, I can't see your faces, so I'm just pointing at you. Sorry.
Hi. My name's Alyssa Spakowski. I'm from Lenoka Harbor. I was just wondering if for future meetings like this, for board meetings, would it be possible to do it like a hybrid where you have virtual and in-person for those that are still not comfortable for coming out yet?
Did you hear the question?
No.
Is it permissible, I think your question is, is it permissible for us to have a half-in-person meeting and a half-virtual meeting? Mr. George, help me out, and I'm fairly certain that is not permissible. Yeah, I don't think it is.
It's just technically not possible?
It's one or the, no, it's not that it's not technically possible. I believe it has to be one or the other.
Okay.
Anything is possible at this point.
All right. Also, for the days where they're in school, for the specials, is there going to be specials? Is there going to be gym, music, and...
There is.
There is? All right. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Quick question. Are they full days or half days?
Shortened days, as of now.
Hi. I'm Colette Dodd from Oakfield, Lenoka. I just started working as a substitute before all this started, and I have two kids in the school system. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask, but I was just wondering about safety measures for substitutes, because it kind of occurred to me that if I'm called to come in, it would probably mean that the teacher was sick. And what does that mean for me going into the classroom? If the teacher's just been sick, we don't know what the teacher has, you know? Am I putting myself more at risk? And so tossing it up in my mind, if I want to go back as a substitute, what's the safety measures?
Right. That's a great question. So, I'm sorry, did you want it?
No, I was going to say the same thing. Great question.
So that is part of what our pandemic response teams, by the way, there's going to be one in each school. That is part of what our pandemic response teams are going to be handling. And our substitutes' safety is just as important as everybody else's. So we will be taking some definite precautions if and when we are notified that a staff member became sick or we find out that a staff member tests positive. There's going to be a very specific set of protocols that are going to happen.
Yeah, are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Rizzoli, you can come back up.
Oh, one more, Mr. Rizzoli behind you.
Hi. Dana Torto, Lenoka Harbor. I just have a question as far as the masks. If we're at 50% capacity and you're able to socially distance, is there a possibility, I mean, look at our special needs kids. Some kids can't wear a mask. I mean, how's that going to work?
Right, that's a great question. The guidance specifically says that if we can socially distance, that students don't have to wear masks. In the instances where we can't socially distance, the students must wear masks. So what I said is that, and again, we're still putting our plan together, but the masks are going to be mandatory to and from school. That's, and when students are not with their cohort, with their teacher, I should say, because we are going to minimize how much students are moving in the buildings. And so if students are moving around the building, they're going to be asked to wear the masks.
Even for special needs kids that cannot wear a mask?
Well, again, and I forget where I answered the question about special needs, but we're talking about our special needs students completely differently than our generalized population. We're still making some plans on how we're going to address that. In some instances, and I'm not, and I'm not going to ask anybody to take this, this is definitely what we're doing, but we're looking to see if there's a way to bring our most neediest population to school every day. We're going to look to see if we have that kind of space, because we recognize that they have very unique needs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rizzoli, I think you're good. Thanks for your patience.
Okay. Last year, I brought up the subject of the $675,000 track and whether it was going to be available to the public. Remember that? And you were going to think about it, consider it. I don't know if you made a decision whether, you know, it's a school facility, it's owned by the taxpayers, if you're going to open it up or not. I mean, you're not even going to open up the weight room to the track team, from what you're telling me, you know, which I don't understand that at all. They're all athletes. My point is, is that our facilities are being opened up to the public after hours, right?
Right now, they are not.
Okay. So that's the question. Are we going to? And if we are, are we going to have really tough rules and regulations for the Boy Scouts, whatever organization wants to come in and use those facilities? And the track thing brought it to my mind, okay, about use? Because I'm sure your custodians need the time to sanitize, right?
They do.
Okay. So if you open it up more hours to outside concerns, other than educational concerns that the district has concerns about, you know, you've got to be tough. That's my point.
So coincidentally, we actually had been talking about the outdoor track. But I can tell you that if this were any other time, other than a pandemic, my response to you would probably be much different. But part of our plan is to absolutely positively minimize traffic from the outside.
Good. That's the answer I wanted to hear, and make sure everybody adheres to it. And if they don't like it, sorry, you can't use the facility. You've got to be tough. Now, back in March 18th, Mr. Polino and Ms. McAvoy brought up the subject of stipends for athletics when there was no work. In a real world, you don't work, you don't get paid. That's a real world, okay? What happened was, I wrote to you in question, there was no answer that night because after I wrote to you and Mr. DeGeorge, you didn't have an answer. You explained that. And the answer was, state of New Jersey, 219 legislature, number 3904, the assembly, the Assembly Bill 3904, which basically said that anybody who works for the, anybody who's a member of the NJEA is going to get paid full salary for no work. Am I right?
You are.
Okay. Now, is that still in place once you open?
It is.
And is NJEA members 100% employed if you're only opening up 50%?
Great question. A3904 is what I think you're referring to.
3904.
It is still in place.
Go ahead.
And the exact language is, in the event of a school closure, A3904 requires that all public school employees, whether covered by collective bargaining agreement or not, continue to receive all compensation benefits and emoluments they would have received had school remained open. As far as I know, A39 is still in place.
Okay.
And if it is still in place, then we are mandated to continue that practice.
Okay. You don't have to answer this, but I was thinking about it. We're in the middle of a lawsuit with other districts about being cut $4 million over three years from State A, right? We still in that lawsuit?
We are, yes.
Okay. Did you ask your labor attorney if there was any way that we could have challenged?
This is where, what I just read you came from our labor attorney.
Okay. So, you know, to me, if I have a contract with a labor union and they're not working and they're not performing the services, I have a right to not pay them. Now, you know, to me, that's a point that could go to New Jersey mediation at the Robert Street Hotel in Newark, and I think I could win that because that's deft the time, and that's a precedent that was set years and years ago under Taft Hartley, okay? And to me, I think it's a beatable thing. And I was wondering, did you ask the labor attorney about taking that position?
No. I asked the labor attorney for a position on how we should proceed because we are very much aware, Mr. Rizzoli, that we don't make the rules, but we sure as hell are going to follow them.
I know that. See, to me, I thought of it, if you didn't do it, they were going to cut you, they're not going to give you any more aid at all. And to me, that's extortion. And extortion is against the law. It's a felony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. In the back? This is when you wish you sat up front, right?
I'm sorry, I just felt the need to make a comment. I understand everything he's saying about the Senate, the law, collective bargaining. Been there, done that. I do want to say, the teachers are not working 50% of the time. So for you to imply that they are not working, they don't have the students 50% of the time... Excuse me. I have the microphone. Excuse me, I have the microphone, I will direct it this way. I apologize for turning around. The teachers are working full-time. The teachers are working preparing lessons for in-school. They're online, they're creating lessons. They're working probably 150% more due to online learning rather than being in the classroom. The bus drivers are working more. Everybody's working more to make this work for the students. So for somebody from the public to get up here to say, people are working less, that is misinformation that I could not sit back and listen to or be on the record. Everybody is working 150%. So do not imply, based on the Senate law that you are quoting, they're not working 100% of their contract.
And the bus drivers are working. Uh, it might be not the way you are used to seeing them driving around in the yellow buses all day long, but they've been delivering food all summer long and during the pandemic. Um, so they have also been working on a rotating shift, I believe. Mr. DeGeorge, on a rotating, um, shift.
Ms. Downing, if I may jump in here real quick.
Yes.
Just, just to address Mr. Rizzoli, and I, and I think, I, I don't know if he was coming in this direction. I don't know if he was really saying that the teachers aren't working to their full extent. And pointing back to what Mrs. McAvoy and myself said months ago, we weren't addressing the fact that our teachers weren't working. We were questioning the stipends for coaching events that never happened and the money that was given out for the, for the co-curricular activities. So that's what we questioned. We never questioned if our teachers were working. We know what they're doing behind the scenes, believe me, we do. Um, so that's something that, that we were concerned about. And, and, and it's funny because we was talking to Dr. Clark and the President Downing today about that and if that's gonna proceed in the future. Um, again, that's my concern. You know, if, if we start school sports and everything's canceled, are we gonna be paying stipends again? Um, but they did address that, that this, this legislation um, for, you know, if, if, even if the schools are not in session, yada, 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 it goes on so forth and such that we're paying them. But the stipends again were my concern.
And if I could jump in, Mr. Rizzoli. On page 16, tonight we're voting on new co-curricular and advisor stipends, but there's, it also says that they will get paid if the sport or the co-curricular activity starts and if it ends. Because I know a lot of us had that concern. So if it does start and it doesn't come to completion, it would be prorated. So I know we are all concerned about that, or some of us at least.
But, and we are approving that tonight so that they can, uh, go forward with these activities and sports if we're allowed to do it. Okay, any more comments?
Melissa Presmelinski, Forkett River. Um, there's been some guidance to other school districts that they're going to strongly encourage COVID testing for students to return in-person instruction. Um, I've seen guidance, like every two weeks, students have to undergo testing. Will you require any testing for students to return in person?
Something we're considering but haven't decided on yet.
Okay, um, and then will there be any additional, like, health screenings, like temperature checks or anything like that that the students will have to undergo prior to entering the school building?
Absolutely.
Okay, would that be something like the bus driver would administer before they even get on the bus?
Well, not necessarily the bus driver, but we're talking about staff mem, uh, individuals who are, that's going to be their, their job, their assignment.
Okay.
Temperature checks and health screenings.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you so much for your questions tonight. We really appreciate them. So at this time, I'm going to, um, ask board members to comment. And, um, if you would give your committee reports as well. Mr. Scanlon, would you like to start?
Uh, thank you, President Downing. Excuse me, frog in my throat. Uh, first, I'd like to, for the first time, be able to in-person congratulate the high school and middle school graduates and their families. Every milestone in education is worth celebrating. And we're glad we were finally able to do that. I'd like to thank the administration faculty for making the celebrations possible. At the last finance committee meeting, we found out that the Special Olympics of New Jersey has given, uh, our school $10,000 to help fund the extended school year program. And there's a resolution tonight on the agenda accepting that. Another, another agenda that came up from the, uh, finance committee was the, um, increase in salary for substitute bus drivers. Lacey was, once again, the lowest-paid, uh, district for substitute bus drivers. And in order to become competitive, there's a $2 increase, which makes us tied now with the, we're, we're still the lowest, but we're at least tied with somebody for the lowest. We're not hanging around on the bottom all by ourself. Uh, and, uh, in addition, I, I mentioned this before, I'll mention it again because there really was nobody here before when I mentioned it. Um, the, the schedule that we are planning so far to adopt, according to what the cha, state changes next. Uh, but the, in, in the current view of things, I was a little concerned because the high school starts at 7 o'clock in the morning. And when I brought that up with Dr. Clark, uh, she, uh, contacted Ed Hannon, head of transportation, and he explained in detail to me exactly why that's necessary. And I'd just like to share what I found out with everyone here. Uh, we have 85 students that are involved with VOTEC in mates, Alps, and PAA, which are located in, respectfully, Barnegat, Ware Town, and.
Tom's River.
Tom's River. Uh, those 85 students have to be at their programs there at 7:25, which means they have to be picked up and brought here and then from here transported in those three different directions. In addition to that, we have 37 students who are AM, which is gonna be the early portion of our shortened day, in Jackson Brick, Tom's River, and Ware Town for VOTEC. And they have to be in there at 7:30. So that right there becomes a total of 140, uh, some students, right off the top of my head, I'm not gonna try any of that, might be 125. But on top of that, you have another 103 students who go in with the middle school students who go to Mondan and St. Joe's. So, well, we have the total of 225 students whose schedules involve other districts that start early. We have to start early enough to get them here, to get them shipped out to those places. And it kind of locks us into that early start, which, it doesn't make me like the early start, but I'm, it appears that we're locked into it and don't have much of a choice. So I know some people are concerned by it. And it's concern, it was a concern ironically when I brought it up. I thought it was gonna be just me. But it's, everybody has the same feeling up here, it would appear. And we feel that there's just no way around it with our requirement to get students where they need to go. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And, uh, thank you, Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Peters?
First, I'd like to, uh, chat, a huge speech written, but it's getting late, so I'm just gonna wing it here. Um, first, I want to thank everybody for staying so late. We had a long private session, we had some personal matters we had to take care of. And I appreciate you sticking out and coming up with all of your questions and, and whatnot. Um, as far as the track, Ms. Rizzoli, I'd like to comment on that. We did discuss that in the fill facilities meeting. Uh, our concern was the track being damaged. And our biggest concern was the public safety, that if we did open up the track to the public, we have no cameras in that back area of the school. So God forbid that someone fell or broke an ankle or had a heart attack or something, that they could be in the back part of that building. So we did look into possibly getting cameras for the football field that would cover that area and cover that track area. So we did address that. But with the COVID thing, we just decided that, you know, it wasn't a, a very good, uh, option there. Another concern was, uh, you know, if you've ever been there or not, but the line that's there and the work that's there and all the, um, uh, the lion's den, we're concerned about having those gates open and not being possibly vandalized. And there was a lot of different concerns we brought up. But we did talk about possibly open up after this at some point. And the minute there's any type of damage, we're shutting it down. We had concerns about, you know, the, the football field being tore up because that's a sod field, that's such as a regular grass field as the other fields in the high school. So we did look into that. Um, had an opportunity to, uh, attend high school graduation and the middle school ceremony. And what hit me the most was myself graduating, walking on that stage in 1984, and being with all my friends and realizing that 50% of the friends weren't there, that they couldn't say goodbye to their friends or congratulations to their friends. And that was a real reality check. You know, being up there on that graduation for that and seeing that on stage, sitting there through those two graduations, realized that half the class couldn't say goodbye to the other half and, and vice versa. I know with social media, I'm sure the kids talk and whatnot, but that, that hit me pretty hard. Um, as far as reopening, the amount of time and effort, um, that Mr. Decker, Mr. Wlenski, Dr. Clark, Mr. DeGeorge, everybody that is putting into this is just tremendous. And just to see, being a graduate of this district, seeing that they're trying to pull together to do the right thing. And again, children's safety is first, and we're putting that first. And then obviously, you know, education, but safety is number one here. And the state has us and says, you know, this is what you're gonna do. You know, so we, we try, try, try. And then today, this other plan came out. So they're doing their best they possibly can. Uh, I filled in for Mr. Polino at a curriculum meeting. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it, so I was his sub and I went to that meeting also. Uh, they introduced us a new program, I believe it was for 7th to 8th and 9th. Am I correct by saying that?
Yeah, Mrs. McAvoy will give a report of curriculum.
Okay, all right. Um, really good program, I was impressed with that. That's about it, stay safe, we're working hard, we'll get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mrs. McAvoy, you're on.
Hi. Um, we had a curriculum meeting last Wednesday. It was very involved and long. We had an overview of the new math curriculum. It'll be for grade 6 to 8, and it's called Intro to Math. And it is, um, remote friendly. So if we do end up going virtual, there's a lot of good aspects that, um, can be tied in virtually. We learned that, um, because we are down one supervisor, we, um, there's new assignments. And one thing that I like as a teacher is supervisors from the elementary schools will now be going around to evaluate teachers from the other schools. So I just think that's great. Instead of just having your supervisor evaluate you, you'll have a supervisor from another school for a different perspective. We talked about a new, um, goal that Dr. Clark will be having. It's called Parent University. And it sounds really, really neat, and a lot of parents will be involved in that. And she'll be telling you more about that after the board retreat. We did get the CARES Emergency Relief Grant. So all the students, um, Dr. Clark and K to 12 will have a Chromebook now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then we talked about all the surveys that went out, so I'm not gonna reiterate on that. Quickly, um, every month I do the spotlight on students. Rebecca Russo graduated from Ocean County College. She went to Rutgers and Keene. She's, um, working in her BS in Psychology. She's working towards a master's. She worked in group homes and outpatient facilities, helping patients with multiple, multiple, uh, psychological diagnoses. She's recently been promoted to clinical field supervisor at her place of employment. She's been working endless hours through the current pandemic due to the increase in mental health cases. So maybe we'd be able to use her in the future. Um, the next one is 2013 alumni Andy DeAngelis. Andy is a lighting engineer with Advanced Staging in Philadelphia. He sets up stages and events for major corporations and universities, not only area, but throughout the United States. He was an amazing video editor here at the high school. And he partnered with Mr. Merman, um, while he was in college producing Lacey, Legends of Lacey Township. When the pandemic started in March and live events were shut down, Andy thought he would be out of work. But his video editing skills served him well, and Andy's now busier than ever. His credits this spring include working on virtual commencements for Columbia University and Princeton University. He also was a resource to Mr. Merman, who needed advice on how to handle the virtual events here in Lacey Township. So congratulations to both of our alumni. And my comments are going to be very short. The graduations both were incredible. And I feel for all of you. I was a parent, I was a teacher. Everything is very uncertain. And it's stressful for the parents, the community, everyone, the Board of Ed, because none of us know what it'll look like, but we are trying our hardest. Thank you, Mrs. Downing.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Mr. Polino?
Yes, thank you. Um, before I start, Dr. Clark, um, just for something. I, I know a lot of questions are coming up about, um, co-curricular activities, especially our sports and so forth. Do you think maybe it would be feasible next, uh, month to get our athletic director out here to answer and field some of the questions? Is that possible?
Um, yeah, I can see why not. I mean, we can certainly, uh, invite her.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first of all, I want to say congratulations again to our, our class of 2020 graduates, our seniors, our eighth graders, our sixth graders, our fourth graders, our kindergartners, everybody who was moving up and, and moving on. Unfortunately, uh, I apologize for not being at the graduations. Had it been that Friday, uh, when the big storm hit, I was able to make that. But then the weekend, I was at work and I just could not get off. So I apologize for that. But I heard it was great, and I want to congratulate our seniors on a, a job well done. Uh, I'd like to thank, um, our administration, Dr. Clark, Dr., uh, Mr. Decker, Mr. DeGeorge, um, our principals, our staff, our parents. Um, and like, you know, uh, Mr. Peters said, the amount of hours that they're spending getting this, um, this going for September with the mandates, it's, it's tremendous. Um, it, hours and hours of meetings, virtual meetings and so forth. So I want to thank them for their, their due diligence and the hard work they're putting in, um, with this ever fluid-changing, um, stuff that's going on. Um, I want to thank President Downing, Vice President Riggs. Uh, this has been certainly trying times for the board. Um, I, I was on the board years ago and I don't remember the amount of communications and amount of hours that we put in back then. But, um, truly quality stuff coming from the top from our board. And I want to congratulate and thank them for, for their very hard work in keeping us all informed of what's been going on, and I thank them.
Thanks, Ray.
Hopefully, we'll get things going, uh, for September. Again, you know, I, I know there's a lot of things at work and the parents still gonna have a lot of questions. Uh, but I, but I know we're working on a lot of safety issues. Um, Dr. Clark and her staff are. I, I think that once the parents who are hesitant to tend to send their children back, they're gonna see what's in place and, and they might have a change of heart, and I, and I hope so. Um, other than that, stay well, enjoy your summer, and thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Polino. Mr. Riggs?
Thank you, President Downing. Um, so, policy. We met on, um, Wednesday, July 15th. Uh, it was a virtual meeting. Um, it was myself, it was Skip, and it was, um, President Downing. And quite possibly the last virtual meeting, um, because it seems like we're starting to go back online here and doing this. Um, as weird as it was, and as hard as it was to start, I, I kind of enjoyed it towards the end. But I guess we have to let that all go now, too. Um, so we had, uh, five policies and then one regulation to accompany one of those policies. I'll go through them one by one fairly quick. Um, they're all pretty easy, straightforward. Um, so first one was, uh, policy 2, 2622, which was student assessment. Um, they took out park. Uh, park's not used anymore, and now we use the NJSLS. Uh, so anytime that park pops up, we need to go back in and, and just, uh, update the policy. Um, so that's that one. Um, number two was heat participation policy for student athlete safety, which we enacted as an optional policy in March of 2019. Uh, now that's mandated. That has to do with, um, how hot the fields get, taking breaks. They have a, um, uh, some sort of device, it's not in front of me right now, but some sort of thing that checks the, the heat stress of the fields and how hot it is for humans out there. What's that thing called? Wet, wet something? Yeah, I don't know, something. But now it's not, it's not an optional anymore, now it's mandated. Um, not an option anymore. Uh, number three, uh, we have an attendance policy. And basically, the attendance policy, uh, cleaned up a lot of stuff and gave the administration a little bit of, uh, teeth going after, like, calling the house and saying, you know, why isn't so-and-so in today? Something like that. It was just an updated policy on that one. Um, number four, uh, there's two policies. So in health and physical education, um, in, we had an LGBTQ, um, policy that was enacted. And that ended up in our health and physical education. There was also one in regards to financial literacy. And they were, they ended up in our health and physical education, and they have now been moved out, and now they're part of where they should be, uh, the curriculum content, which is 2200. Uh, so they moved out of this and they moved over to there. It was a transfer. And then number five is, uh, religion in schools. And then number five is religion in schools. Religion in schools is again an updated of an older, an update of an older policy. The older policy was from February 7th of 2003, and the new one came out January 16th of 2020. This has to do with, I'll just read some of it for you. Basically, the last three paragraphs were taken out. They, if you read them, they make almost no sense anyway. They were just wrapped into a bit of a more concise policy early on. But what it has to do with is, here, let's do it this way. Okay. Applying the government constitutional principles and particular concepts related to religious expression, that's religious literature, teaching about religion, student dress code, religious excusals. And then the side is that, another part of that is the Equal Access Act, which is general provisions, prayer services and worship services, means of publicizing meanings, and lunchtime and recess. So it, it just added a religion, religion in schools policy. It's, I'll talk to you afterwards if you really want to talk about this, because it's a, it's a long one. So that was pretty much it for our policies. The only other thing I have is kind of a neat thing that happened, because I did the graduations, too. I did the high school graduation, two-part, and then did the middle school graduation, both parts. Didn't end up, didn't plan on sticking around, but I just stuck around anyway. But kind of a neat thing happened at the tail end of the, of the Lacey Middle School graduation. And so there's a side note of board service, which doesn't really come up too much, or I'm not sure if you guys are aware of it. But sometimes we have to sit in on student matters, you know, long-term suspensions. Kids come off a long-term suspension. And in those meetings, it's, it's very close and personal. It's sometimes confrontational. I'm not going to dip in anything, don't worry. It's not, it's not a, it sometimes starts off confrontational and then sort of works its way through, and everyone comes to a common ground. But the point of that is, is a lot of times you decide at the end, are we going to let this person back in? Or are we going to continue a long-term suspension, whatever it is? So you got to sit there and weigh the options. So we've sat on, I've sat on a bunch of them over the years. But someone came up to me at the middle school graduation, and he said to me, and we're all wearing masks, so I didn't realize who it was at first. He says, hey, you know, thanks for your help back then. What, what happened? Everything's going good now. This, this person is really straightening their life out. And now they graduated, and now they're going on to great things. And it's just, the reason why I'm saying it is because there's, if you do this position, it's sometimes hard to find the good points or what matters as you're doing it. And it's not always the glamorous side you see up here. Sometimes it's some other things that happen that nobody realizes. But there has been a couple moments throughout where someone comes up or says something, and you do have, you do make change. It's not always the change you think you're going to make or something like that. But sometimes you meet these people, and I don't know, they tell a story, or you let them back in, or you give them another chance, and it works out well. And I think that's another part of what we do up here, and it's not spoke about that much. That being said, anybody that's thinking about doing this job, the clock's ticking. You don't have much time left to contemplate this. So, and that's it. President Downing, I thank you as always.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. And very briefly, because everything basically has been said, but I do want to congratulate the seniors of 2020. They finally had their in-person graduation. And also, the middle school graduation was wonderful. We had the parents sitting on the field with the students. I'm not sure if the students liked having their parents sitting there, but it was a nice touch, I thought. But congratulations to both, and I'm glad that we were able to do it, considering the heat as well. I felt sorry for them sitting in the sun. Well, we were too, but they were on the field. And, but it didn't seem to bother them. I guess youth, they were just big smiles and just happy to be able to do it. So I want to thank the administration, central administration, and the high school administration, and the middle school administration for working endless hours, because every day, the guidelines were being changed, and then we'd have to go back to another plan. So it finally transpired on last weekend, and so congratulations. And that's all I'm going to say for tonight. It's late, so thank you. And again, we apologize for coming out late this evening. We had a lot going on in a private session. Mr. Decker, do you have anything you want to add tonight? Any comments? We always forget about you down there.
That's fine, but I'd just like to, you know, I'd like to thank the board for supporting the administration during this time and actually the community as a whole. As you hear everyone come up, there's uncertainties. We don't know. Things change on a dime, like we were hit for a loop today with the governor coming out with this new edict. So it's very difficult to put a plan in place that covers all aspects. But we are feverishly working at doing so, and I hope that it serves the community well.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Mr. George, you okay?
I thank you for the opportunity, but I am fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to new business then. Page 2A. Could I have a motion? Move.
Second.
A1 through number 27. Who was the motion?
Mrs. McAvoy.
Donna. Okay, and Ron. Roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Scanlon?
Excuse me. I'm going to abstain on item 21 and vote yes on the remainder.
Mr. Peters?
I'm so sorry. Could you repeat what, what they were again? What items, from where to where?
We're voting on A, items 1 through 27.
Yes.
Oh, gotcha. Yes, I'm going to have to abstain from item 901409 and 907724.
So just to be clear, that's on the list of bills and, and A14 as well, the tuition?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
No on 25 and 26, and yes on the rest.
Mrs. McAvoy, can I urge you to abstain on the bill that is...
Yes, I will abstain on the bill for the conference I attended. Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. DeGeorge, I miss 25 and 26. I'd like to vote no on that also, please.
Oh, sure.
My apologies.
No problem. Okay. Mr. Polino?
Quick question. Sorry, quick question. 26, does that have to do with, with our private session deal?
No, it does not.
No.
No.
It didn't. That's going to be added on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So yes on all except, I'm sorry.
Say that again.
So yes on everything, no on 25.
Mr. Riggs?
I'm going to say yes. I'm going to abstain on number two, I guess, the whole thing? Unless you had something more specific for me?
Just your portion, but I'll take an abstention on all.
Okay. And I'm also going to say no on 25.
Mrs. Downing?
Okay, I'm voting yes. I need to abstain on A2, Bill Number 206100. It's a workshop I attended with Mr. Riggs. I'm also abstaining on Bills 950450, 953821, and 524950.
Great, thank you. For the record, everything passes except A25, which fails.
Thank you. Okay, B, donations. I want to thank the Women's Club and the Moose Lodge for their donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, and thank you for your generous donation.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. DeSensio for the $2,000.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and on behalf of the entire district, thank you for your donations. Moving on to C, professional days and workshops.
I think it's Programs and Curriculum, yes.
No, C is Professional Days and Workshops.
Move.
Second.
Who was the move? Mr. Riggs?
Mr. Riggs was motioned.
Mrs. McAvoy? Awesome. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Yeah, they switched this month for some reason. Okay, D, Programs and Curriculum. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Who was the motion? Skip or Frank?
Frank and Donna.
I hate these masks. I can't hear anybody. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Moving on to E, Certificated Personnel, Items 1 through 15. Could I have a motion, please?
Will make that motion.
Ed?
Second.
Okay, Frank. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and congratulations to the retirees.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and I'm abstaining from E9, E14, and E15.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to F, Non-Certificated Personnel, Items 1 through 7.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and again, congratulations on the retirements. I was in the wrong column, so. Mrs. BA, congratulations. I know you were a hard worker for the district for a long time.
Oh, Miss BA.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes, again, congratulations.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, Mr. DeGeorge, are there any add-ons?
Yes, Mrs. Downing, there are two. The first one is entitled overturning of HIV finding and reads, "Move that the board overturn the finding against student ID 902078 in the October 2019 harassment, intimidation, and bullying case."
Is there a motion?
Move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Who was the move?
It was Frank and I.
Hold up one second. Sorry.
I'm sorry, who's the motion?
I move Frank second.
Riggs and Polino.
I'm confused about how the motion is worded.
Sure, the motion is to, whether or not to overturn the HIV finding.
And a yes vote is what?
A yes vote is a vote to overturn the finding, that it is a hit.
Thank you.
A no vote is to keep it as a hit.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Scanlon?
No.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
No.
Mrs. Downing?
No.
The motion fails as it did not gain a majority of the board members present to vote. So the HIB stands as decided originally.
Okay, and there's another.
Number two is the conclusion of long-term suspension of student, and reads, "Move that the board approve the conclusion of the suspension of student ID 906264 effective immediately." Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Skip?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all I have.
Okay. Seeing that we have no other business, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, meaning adjourned.
We're out.
Settle down.
I love doing that.